Station. Can we all set?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. There's no in-person attendance of members of the public. But everyone's effort, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. Meetings being recorded within 48 hours will be posted up on the town's website and social media pages. The following members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Brian Heath, chairman, Jerry Chipman, vice chairman, and Anna Klimas, member. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll calls. At the meeting as well are Bridgewater Town staff members, Jennifer Burke, community and economic development director, Steve Solari, building inspector, and Nicole Salvo is executive assistant. At this time, everybody's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. The project is a public hearing and allows for public comment. We ask that you use a chat feature to ask your questions by listing your name and address and your questions. The chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participate participants menu and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking your question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thank you. Tonight's meeting, we have two applications before us. The first one on the agenda is a variance application under bylaw section eight point four. It's oh, one second. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Keith and Shelley Donahue, living at 115 Longview Drive, Bridgewater, Mass. They're seeking a variance to a 30-foot setback, looking to put in an in-ground pool and requesting a 22-foot variance. At this time, if the applicant or representative, the applicant would like to address the board and provide some understanding of the variance and the
I don't have the package in front of me, Nicole. Who's the applicant? Or who's the representative?
Pardon?
Who's the representative?
The applicant is Keith and Shelley Donahue.
All right.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Did you have someone that's supposed to be helping with this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be me.
Okay.
All right. If you wouldn't mind just to walk forward with an understanding of the variance request and the hardship related to it.
Okay, my name is Tony DeFrias. I'm from Michael J. Koskinen Associates. We represent the Donagys on the application before you. And the Donagys are asking for a variance request for the installation of an 18 by 36 in-ground pool.
Apologize for interrupting. If I mute Brian, the feedback goes away. So Brian, is it okay if I just mute you while he speaks? Go ahead.
Okay, they're, they have an existing above-ground pool, which they'd like to replace with an 18 by 36 in-ground pool. The pool will be located in the rear yard area behind the house. They currently have a deck, a raised deck or a second-story deck and a ground-level patio. And the pool would be 10 feet from that, and it would wind up putting the pool at its closest point, eight feet from the rear property line. The current setbacks for this area are 30 feet for the rear, 20 for the side, and 35 for the front, because this is a residence D. But also being in a residence D, the size of the lot is 18,500 square feet. So this lot was created by definitive subdivision plan in the 90s. There's, their house is serviced by a septic system, which is located in the front of the house. And to the south, along their southerly borderline, they have a 20-foot-wide drainage easement, which has a drain line that runs from the street out to the land behind their property, which is for a drainage lot for a detention basin. So what we're seeking tonight is the variance to allow for construction of the in-ground pool. I did prepare a letter, which was submitted as part of the package, stating the reasons that we felt we met the requirements for the variance. I can go over them if you'd like, or I don't know if you had a chance to read them. I'll just, if you indulge me, I'll go over them real quickly. First is due to the size of the lot, the zoning setback requirements encroach heavily into the existing usable recreational area. Second, the proposed pool cannot be located within the front yard area due to the location of the soil absorption system. Number three, the proposed pool cannot be located to the south of the dwelling due to the existing drainage easement and the close proximity to the dwelling and the septic system. In-ground pools, from the separation distance between an in-ground pool and a septic system needs to be 20 feet under Title V. Next, the proposed pool cannot be placed to the north of the dwelling due to lack of enough sufficient area. It would place that within the 20-foot zoning setback requirement. The existing location of the raised deck and the ground-level patio along the rear of the dwelling do not allow for placement of the pool closer to the dwelling due to the sandy soil conditions, which could potentially undermine said patio and deck during the excavation process. Next, the relief would not result in a substantial detriment to the public good, as there are no dwellings located behind the area, which would be the closest to the proposed pool. Drainage lot with a stonemarted detention basin exists behind a locust. And lastly, the proposed pool does not derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw, as in-ground pools are allowed within this zone. The bylaw, as written, doesn't necessarily take into account this unique situation, being that these lots are only 18,500 square feet. So when you put a house on there and a septic system and drainage, you don't necessarily have a ton of room left over to try and fit a pool and meet the setback requirements. And then, as part of our submittal, as a point of information for the board, we attached two decision letters. There've been variances approved within this neighborhood, one in 2010 for 30 Longview Drive and one in 2013 for 112 Longview Drive. Both were seeking setback variances, in-ground pools. Also, as part of the package we'd submitted to Nicole was some correspondence from the Butters, who supported the Donagys in their attempt to get the variance here. So that's pretty much what, what we're looking to do and what we're hoping that the board will grant the variance as presented. So if anyone has any questions, I'll gladly anyway.
Brian, are you unmuted?
Am I unmuted now?
Now you are, yeah.
Sorry about this, everybody. We're having some technical difficulties here. Technology is fantastic. So looking at, and I'm sorry, but I didn't hear. If you're, if you're looking at the house to the right, behind the garage, did you say there was something, there were soil issues over there or something?
No, if you were standing in the street facing the house, you'll see that on the plan, there's a dash line called, which is the zone, designates the zoning setback line. So you, you have literally no room to fit anything there as far as a pool is concerned. To the south, along the southerly line, you'll see where it says existing drain line and easement. So you're limited there. And in the front yard, you'll see where it says existing leaching area. So there is, the only place they can fit a pool, which is in the area that they have their above-ground pool currently. They just would like to eliminate the, the above-ground and install
So the patio itself there, is that down at grade level or is that raised?
No, that patio is at grade level and the deck is raised. The area, that area, when it was, when we originally did the subdivision, that's pretty much, that area is all sandy soil. So trying to get any closer to the dwelling or deck or patio, you run the risk of undermining those two structures.
Sorry, and so too, if looking at the pool to the left of the pool, that's the drainage area that you were speaking of?
Yes, if right to the south, it says existing drain line and easement. So there's a dash line, there's a 20-foot-wide drainage easement, so you cannot put any kind of structure with the drainage. And it would jam it with it. Sorry.
I think it slopes that way too, doesn't it?
Yes, it slopes, it slopes from the street towards the backyard and out towards the detention area.
I have a question. The above-ground pool, is that to scale?
Yes.
So the above-ground pool comes out the same distance you're looking at for the in-ground pool, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And the 10-foot strip, what will be there, if and when the in-ground pool goes in, will there be an apron there?
I would say that yes, there would be an apron probably in the area of four feet wide.
So if there's going to be a four-foot apron, couldn't you bring the pool back toward the dwelling six feet? I know you said you're concerned about undermining and the digging, but can't you make arrangements? I'm not an engineer, but to prevent that, I'm just looking at, I'm saying it's over 70% of the setback that you're looking to remove. And I'm just wondering, did you have a plan B? And I'm thinking that if you're looking at roughly a four-foot apron, that's six feet, that you should be able to slide that pool back to, towards the house in a compromised mood.
Well, the apron is obviously at ground level, and it's not going to require the type of excavation as you would have for the in-ground pool. So your chances of causing an undermining situation of the deck or patio is it would not be the same as digging for the, the pool itself. I mean, you could look at 10 feet, it's, it's probably as close as you really want to get, once you're getting the sandy soils. Once you start digging and you can really, if you get too close, you get, you start to lose those sides and have, which would require providing some kind of shoring.
Like, I guess where I am is that it's, I look at it in your favor, that it's, it's a detention basin and not a dwelling at the, at the rear setback. But you're requesting, as I said, more than 70% relief from that setback and I, I, I just, I'm finding, I'd like to try to find some middle ground on this, if there is any.
Well, a potential plan B could be a smaller pool, let's say 16 by 32. So if we did that, we could get to, let's say, 10 feet from the property line.
Okay. And then what if, what if you do, what if there wasn't an apron? It was just a grassy area between the, because you already, you actually have an patio there, which I assume you're keeping.
Yes, it is grassed. I mean,
You gotta have something, but other things into, to Jerry's point, as an alternative, and, you know, I've worked with people on the pools before. What's the drop between the, the, I don't know if it's sliders down to the ground level?
You have, you have basically one step, so you're looking at around eight inches.
So the deck is, but it looks like the stairs in the front seem to be quite, if those are stairs in the drawing, I don't know.
From the patio, which you see, which you're seeing from the patio to the pool, that stairs going up onto a small deck to get into the above-ground pool.
How high is the deck itself?
The one attached, the one attached to the house or the one attached to the pool? One attached to the house is basic, well, what you have, the situation here is they have a walkout basement. So the deck that you see attached to the house would be at the first floor level.
Correct. So, all right, so they have a walkout underneath the basement, underneath that deck?
Yes, but in the patio area.
In the patio area.
So the deck, so the deck is on posts, which you enter, you would enter the house onto the first floor, living space.
So you've got a pool from the ground level to going into the house at the first floor level?
Could you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
So from a, from base ground level up to the threshold for the entrance to the house, that's about eight feet?
From the patio to enter into the basement, it's about eight inches from the patio up to, up to the first floor. Eight, eight, between eight and 10, give or take.
So basically, still getting to have a form of egress out of the house on the first floor back, you're, you're still going down at least eight feet.
Yes.
Well, they may not like this idea, but what's, what about getting rid of the deck? Moving the pool a little closer, just having stairs out, going down to the, the pool deck around. The problem here is, as Jerry said, it's eight feet is, it's, it's, and when you put the pool there, your pool's eight feet, you put about a, even a three-foot apron, now you're, I mean, you're right there on the back property line. That's, that's, that's a tough one.
So if we did a, so if we did a pool, let's say that was 16 by 32, and we could get the five feet to the deck and patio with a little creative construction technique, would that be more acceptable to the board?
I'm sorry, say that one again, if you would, please?
If we were to reduce the pool size and go to, say, 16 by 32, and we moved it, say, five feet off the deck, I think that I would definitely not want to get any closer than that.
So you'd be, so you'd be looking at 15 feet, 50% of a setback.
Yes, so exactly, exactly.
Yeah. I would be okay with that, Anna, Jerry?
I'd be comfortable with that. I think it's a good middle ground, Mr. Chairman.
I would definitely be more comfortable with that.
Now, the, now the, I, I've had discussions with the applicant about this, but she, I see that she is here, and so I think it only fair to just ask her that if, that's acceptable to them, if we could.
Sure.
Shelley Donaghy?
Hello?
Hi, Shelley.
Hi.
So if we reduce the pool, say, 16 to 16 by 32, and make it five feet off the deck, that'll give you 15 feet to the property line, and the board would consider that a better idea. Are you okay with that?
Um, yes, I would be okay with that.
Okay.
That would be common ground.
All right, if, if someone would like to make a motion on this?
I will, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to grant what would be 15 feet of, from the rear setback line and allow for the in-ground pool to still be built.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can I just ask that possibly a new plan be done and sent to our office so that we can have that on file?
Yes, I will get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you, this is the husband. Thank, thank you. Next on the list, hold it for one second. Is a, it's an appeal from the building inspector in relation to 55. Is the applicant here?
Yes, good evening. My name is Daniel Diabru. I'm with Brennan Recupero. My office is in Taunton, and I am joined by Dale Higgins.
Okay. All right, if you would kindly state your case for the appeal of the inspector's decision?
Sure. I guess preliminarily, I know that there were some letters of, of support submitted, and one I submitted additionally to Ms. Salvo earlier this evening, and I just wanted to make those part of the record, that they were from Mr. Wood, a Mr. Chase, a Mr. Perry, and a Mr. Mahoney.
I did receive the letter from Mr. Chase and Mr. Mahoney. I don't recall getting the other one, the other two, I'm sorry.
One got sent today. But there's
This one was from
The one today was in opposition though, yes?
Yes, the one I got today was from Mr. Prisco.
Yeah, and that was in opposition.
Yes, pardon me, yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interrupt for a second? I've seen some letters, I didn't see the ones that the attorney just mentioned that were sent this evening. But I would like to stick to what, what is here, and that is operating a, whether or not the cease and desist, it's a yes or no vote for this board, and whether or not it's a business operating in a residential zone, and whether we support the building commissioner's decision for the cease and desist. It doesn't have anything to do with personalities, people, et cetera, if someone's nice or not. So I would like to ask, right at the outset, that anyone speaking in favor or against, speak directly to the bylaw and nothing else, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. The bylaw, as Jerry pointed out, really, and that's one of the things, as I was reading through the whole cases, it's, you know, we can get letters of support and letters of disapproval, but it really doesn't hinge upon what neighbors or, or people think, it's, it's, it's the bylaw. And as Jerry pointed out, the issue is whether Mr. Higgins is himself running a, a business out of the home in violation of the bylaw.
That's, I, I would, I would agree, the bylaw will control, again, I was forwarded all but one of the letters by Ms. Salvo this afternoon, and I, I, I just wanted, since apparently they were received by the town, I just wanted that to be, to be noted, but, but I, I understand this isn't, you know, it's not to, it's not a popularity contest, certainly. Would, would the board like me to question Mr. Higgins to establish the factual basis before I address the bylaw or?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would help to understand what type of business he's, I mean, I understand it's a landscape business, but exactly what he's got there, I think that would help to understand it a little better.
I, I
The, that were submitted, but unfortunately, I haven't been able to get into the area to look at it, so.
Sure, I'll do that now, and then I can address, I can address the issue. Mr. Higgins, could, could you introduce yourself to the board, please? I think you may be muted.
I am muted, I'm. Well, now he's muted again. He's unmuted, but for some reason, his sound isn't coming through.
Oh, so maybe you could just make your presentation first.
Sure. Again, I, I'd submit that the address and question is 55 Alexander Drive. And Mr. Higgins has, owns that property with his wife, and he's lived there for approximately 20 years. Mr. Higgins, for a living, runs a landscaping business. And I believe he's owned and operated the building for just about as long as he has lived at 55 Alexander Drive. There are, on the property, to my understanding, two
Sorry, go ahead.
Two storage containers and two sheds, shorts, storage sheds. And along with, as part of the business, he has, again, it's my understanding, three vehicles and three trailers, all of which are registered.
Are they kept on the property?
He parks them at the property, yes.
Okay.
When, and it's my understanding that it's, it's a family business. He and his daughter participate in the business along with his daughter's fiancee and potentially one other family member. Who, all but the fiancee also live at 55 Alexander Drive. And the entirety of, of the business, it's, it's a landscaping business, I mean, I mean, it necessarily takes place, obviously elsewhere, and, you know, there's no customers that come to the property, no deliveries to the property, nothing like that. So
So can I ask you a question, Daniel?
Yes.
As I see this, as you said, there's, there's two buildings, and there's two additional containers?
That's my understanding, correct, yes. And then, when, when we say buildings, that they're sheds and, yes.
Well, all right, so I see one, you know, I only, I only see the pictures that were submitted, but, so there's one building or shed, not sure what the dimensions are, but it looks like it's got a full door in the front, in the middle. In addition to his landscape materials, but well, keep anything else in, in the building?
I, I know he uses them in connection with the business, precisely what's kept in there, I would have to ask Mr. Higgins, and I would Mr. Higgins, and I would.
So, then, Daniel, I think what you need to do here is to explain that, under the bylaw, there, he is allowed, and I'm not going to dispute this, you know, there's certain trades that are allowed to use a portion of a dwelling, you know, and storage and items related to his work. If we're talking, you know, three trailers that aren't kept in the buildings, because then it's, and the other thing is that all needs to be kept indoors, and I see a bunch of pallets out here. I don't, can't really make out what the other things are, some wheelbarrows. I gotta believe those, I'm going to assume unless you tell me otherwise, that that stuff is in association with running his business. So, that, the whole thing about this bylaw is that you're not allowed to run a, you know, a business in a residential area. There are some, you know, under section six point three four, there are some exceptions. But then when you look at section six as well, you know, open lot storage materials, which aren't incidental, aren't permitted. And the trailers would fail that one. And then you've got four buildings, not one building that you're using a portion of to support the business. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm having a difficulty with this one.
Sure, and again, I think if we look at the table of uses, six point three oh, I four. Again, I think the question is, is a use of the portion of an accessory building by a resident landscape gardener permissible? And the answer is yes. There's, so I think the question for each of those is, is it an accessory building? Yes, is it, is it able to be used in connection with the landscape gardening business? And the answer is yes. There's nothing in there that, that says one building and only one building, or one shed and only one shed. There's nothing in there that, that limits it in that manner. As long as the buildings themselves are lawfully there, then they may be used for that purpose under the bylaw. And I should mention, with respect to the storage containers in particular, Mr. Higgins reports that those have been there for well in excess of ten years. And under the general laws, forty-eight, section seven, I would suggest that, to the extent it was suggested, those were in violation of zoning, they're actually now considered legally non-conforming structures, because they've been there for more than ten years without any negative action being taken against them, or any enforcement action being taken against them. So with respect to the storage containers, I think those are safe, for lack of a better word. And once they're there illegally, a portion of them can be used, is permissible under the table of uses. As far as the sheds, again, as far as I know, those are permitted and not in violation of the bylaws, so I would suggest those could also be used. In terms of the vehicles, again, I don't see, and I don't, it hasn't been suggested to me that the bylaw caps the number of registered vehicles a homeowner can keep at her home, or or his home, I don't see any.
It doesn't, but what it does, you know, is it gets to the point of, you have, you said there are three vehicles?
That's my understanding, yes. All registered in three trailers, yes.
Picture, I want at least one vehicle, and it seems to have, you know, Mr. Higgins' landscape lettering on the side. Are they commercially registered vehicles?
I believe the answer is yes. Could I suggest it, it occurred to me, and I know through using Zoom and other meetings, sometimes when people have trouble connecting audio over the internet, there's a, there's a phone number, and I'm wondering if that could be provided to Mr. Higgins, I think we're, I'm a little, it would be very useful if he was able to participate.
Sure. How I'm on, I'm having audio issues. The phone number is. I'm trying to find, okay, so he dials. I use the six four six eight seven six nine nine two three. Then you have an ID number. Once you get on, eight seven three seven three seven nine six nine zero seven. If you dial that number, it'll tell you, put in your meeting ID number, hit that, and you should be good.
Thank you. So again, I'll continue, but I'm asking the board, and I'm suggesting that the board should. Am I still? Here, right, okay, sorry, something popped up on my screen. Should reverse the cease and desist order for two separate reasons, essentially, what one is on the merits, which I think we've been addressing. And again, I think that this situation fits squarely within that line I four in the table of uses. I think the occupation fits within it, and I think the use of the accessory buildings for storage fits within it. I don't read, I don't read that to include registered motor vehicles, I, you know, that, I don't read that as, as coming under storage. And again, in my, in my view, that's not prohibited, as long as they're registered.
My question, though, too, in regards to reading that, rises and falls on the sentence that you have not read for instance, which is for incidental work and storage in connection. The word incidental is there in that section, and so how do you get around that this is not just incidental, bringing a work truck home one day after work, but rather this is stored there on a regular basis?
Well, again, I read incidental as, as anything that would be connected to the business that is permitted. So, I mean, for example, plumber, you know, electrician, I would read that to me, and they could keep their tools in a building at home, they could keep their truck in a building at home, they could keep, you know, a certain amount of parts in a building at home. I don't read incidental to mean that it's of a temporary nature or a fleeting nature at all. I think incidental means anything connected to to the principal occupation of the resident.
Well, or incidental can be considered as defined, you know, a use of minor portions, or either that or infrequent. But let's, let's go to the fact that the statute, I mean, the bylaw is there mainly so that people don't really run a pure business out of residential area. The bylaw states that it's the use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building, not three, not four. A building or a dwelling, and it's a portion of it. And the, the the trailers, as you said, are kept outside, that's, that's associated with this business, that's material associated with the business that is not kept. Because it also says, further provides that all storage is kept indoors. They aren't. So, everything I read, it violates the bylaw. I mean, I understand, I don't understand, I think, but I can't agree with it. But that's, that's.
Higgins, you now have to mute your computer.
Hello? How was everyone?
I'm getting a lot of feedback, so.
How was that? This is why I'm not a fan of Zoom.
May I inquire, are you viewing the meeting at the same time as you're on Zoom?
Say that again?
Are you watching the meeting online?
Yes, I am watching the meeting online.
I think you should turn the livestream off, because we're getting a terrible reverb.
Oh, I have no.
Hold on.
How's that?
Much improved.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
They're very good, so if I could go back to the vehicles for a minute, and then I could ask Mr. Higgins some questions, and I did have, in addition to, on the merits, which I understand there may be some disagreement over, I did want to speak to a procedural aspect of the cease and desist order, but again, if, if, for example, I don't think it would be controversial, and I don't think it would be disputed if there was a person in one of the trades listed in that portion of the table of uses, be it a landscaper, or a mason, or a plumber, I don't think it would be controversial to suggest that that person could, you know, bring his or her truck home and park it there. And then the question is, well, what if it was a, you know, a parent and an adult child, and they both lived there and both worked in the same company, could they not bring two trucks home? And, you know, and that, it goes from there, what if it was, you know, a married couple, and one of their adult children? And I don't know that that is prohibited in the bylaws, as a matter of fact, I'm suggesting it is not, and I'm suggesting it's rather arbitrary to place a limit on that when it's not spelled out in the bylaw that.
If you, if you want, we can, I, I don't, you are correct, it doesn't state it in the bylaws, the trucks. The trucks, the fact that there are three commercial vehicles, to me, gives the more credence to the fact that there's a business being run. But if you look towards the, just to the bylaw itself, and you read the bylaw, when it says, you know, the use of a portion of a building or a dwelling, and then it's, and further provided that all, all storage is kept indoors. This is beyond incidental, you've got four buildings, it's not a portion, and the, the trailers are all kept outside, and there's a whole bunch of other stuff kept outside associated with the build, with the business.
Like what?
There's a bunch of pallets out there.
Yeah, that's my firewood.
Well, if, 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 I'm sorry.
All right. I apologize, just trying to answer it as you go.
Well, Mr. Higgins, why don't we wait for a moment, and when it's the appropriate time, I can ask you some questions, but we can, I think, hear the rest of the thought that's being expressed.
Okay.
The general understanding for the bylaw, again, the principle behind the bylaws, I understand, is that the town does not want businesses being run in residential areas. They have made certain exceptions for incidental purposes, to your point. If a mason, you know, say he had a, you know, his one-ton trailer, one-ton truck, and he had a dump on it, he had a, he had a garage in the back, and he used a portion of that for his business, everything was in there, I would agree with you. But if he also stacked a concrete block, kept mixers out there in the backyard, they weren't in the building. If he had another, if he had a trailer that he was moving stuff back and forth with, that's for his business. If that was not kept in the building, then it does not meet the bylaw. Here, as I said, you've got four buildings. Incidental, to my definition and understanding, is, you know, generally minor or infrequent. It seems like we've gone beyond that, and then the other side is, you've got three trailers, all associated with the building kept out in the backyard, I'm assuming they're in the back behind the fence.
Well, well, let me, let me address that, if I may, by moving on to the procedural aspect, because if it is the case that there's certain aspects of the way the property is being used now, that can be remedied, then and that's how the bylaw is appropriately interpreted, then Mr. Higgins would have to address that. But the, the letter that he received, the order in question, again, I would suggest it was very overbroad and very vague, and I want to point out, I'm, my focus is on fairness to Mr. Higgins. I had the chance to speak to Mr. Solari, and I know that Mr. Higgins has spoken to Mr. Solari, and he's been nothing but a perfect gentleman, and this is in no way a criticism of, of him, but this, this is just out of concern for the process that was followed. The, the letter that he received didn't specify anything, you know, for example, about trailers, that's been the focus of some of our discussion tonight. The letter that he received said, you have an illegal business. And again, I think if you consider from Mr. Higgins' perspective, where he's been there for two decades, and this is the business that he uses to support himself and his house and his family, and then he gets a letter saying, you have an illegal business, shut it down, without the benefit of any particulars, I would suggest that that truly isn't, isn't the notice that the bylaws require, the bylaw speaks to, if someone is in violation, you know, the building inspector sends a notice and designates a time within which to remedy it, and the letter in question didn't have any particulars. So certainly, again, as far as storage outdoors of things related to the business, I don't think there's a question, and I don't think Mr. Higgins disagrees, that outdoor storage should not should not occur, and it's my understanding that since the date of the letter, he's undertaken to remove things, the pallets in particular, and again, I don't know, some of these things, you know, become fine lines, if someone that wasn't a business at all, had had some pallets in their backyard, I don't think anybody would take a particular issue with that. So then it becomes a question of, okay, well now, I have these pallets, and I think he stated earlier, he intended whatever their original use was, he intended to use them for firewood, so is that, you know, allowed or not allowed? But certainly, if the board said, hey, you have to move those pallets, and then you're all set, I suspect he would do that and move on. But I just think procedurally, he was never put on notice and never given any particulars as far as what the actual objection is, and what he needs to do to remedy it. And so I, I guess I would suggest to the board, certainly, I don't think it's disputed by anyone here, that the cease and desist order, stop your business, stop your quote-unquote illegal business, is overbroad and must be reversed, at least in part, to whatever degree the board, in its judgment, thinks he is able to use a portion of his property incidental to his business. But, but, so I think the board is really going to have to determine, you know, to what degree the cease and determine, you know, to what degree the cease and desist order would be reversed. But, but I would urge you, and I don't think I'm off base based on the feedback that I've been getting, that, that just to uphold it in its entirety is clearly contrary to the bylaw. I mean, whatever it means, it doesn't mean that he can't do any of these things.
I guess we can agree to disagree, but, you know, I look at it as Mr. Solari issued a cease and desist because it was quite obvious that this was a, a business being run in a residential area.
Excuse me, may I say something, sir? Um, you know, the, the building inspector, you know, I was in communication with him. I, I had a meeting with him, and he was supposed to get together with me and just go through what I had to change to be, you know, within law. And instead, you know, after he got a letter from Steve Prisco's attorney, he just basically pushed it off and said, "No, I'm just going to send out this notice to you." You know, this whole thing is completely crazy. I've been in business here for 24 years. I've been a resident of this town for almost 30 years. And there's not one neighbor on this street that's complained ever. Never. They're all friends of mine. Every, you know, I take care of them, they take care of me. So we have an outside person that's making a big deal out of this. And then I get a cease and desist notice because of it, and now you're going to put my family, you know, in a, in a financial situation because of one person in town.
Well, I, I mean, to some degree, I can, I can understand your concern. But first of all, and as I think was mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, is the bylaw, it, it's not a popularity contest. You know, if, if your neighbor doesn't complain, if you're in violation of it, it doesn't mean that you can keep doing it.
I, okay, I agree, I agree. But, but show me in the bylaw, show it to me. Because your own, your own building inspector told me straight out that this is the first town that he ever worked for that didn't specify how many vehicles you're allowed to have. So I would like you to show me in the bylaw where it says how many vehicles I can have. And show me everything you're talking about. Show it to me in the bylaw because it's not there. I've read it.
Okay, let's read it. The bylaw states the use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building. You've got four. Says A. A is singular. Then it says, "And further provided at the last sentence that all storage is kept indoors."
Okay, everything is indoors?
Not. Your trailer is a part of indoors. Your, the pallet of rocks, it looks like landscaping rocks, you know, you could say, well, yeah, well, what if somebody that wasn't in the landscaping, that wouldn't give them a hard time. You're right.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, sir, but that, that, what you're just talking about, you just redid my entire yard. And we built walls down here. That's what that's for. Come down and take a peek. It's beautiful.
So the, the building that, that has the door in the middle of it, the long one, what is, what is actually kept in the building, if you wouldn't mind?
Uh, machinery.
For the business?
For the business, yes.
Okay. So then the one that has the overhead door on the side door, is that also machinery?
The smaller one, you mean?
Yeah.
The smaller one is a tool shed. There's, there's tools in there. Small tools.
For repairing the equipment?
For the business. Yeah, for repairing equipment, sharpening blades, things like that.
Okay. And then like the container, I, they said there was two. I can, in the picture, there was only, I see one, but.
Yeah, we have a couple of mowers in there.
All right. So you requested that we, we look at the, the bylaw and, and go through it. The bylaw states that what you are allowed to do is use a portion of a dwelling or an accessory building. You're using all of it and you're using four, and you're not keeping everything inside. That is running a business in a residential area. That's what the bylaw stating that you can't do in a residential area.
Okay, so what do I have to change to become compliant?
And, and that's, I, I, I would reiterate, I, I know I addressed it earlier. I, I would really urge the board, if, if the board isn't going to be inclined to reverse the order in its entirety tonight. I, 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 I think it's undisputed. I, I mean, I know earlier it was mentioned, agree to disagree, but he's a landscaper. He lives in a single-family dwelling. Certainly, the bylaw allows him to use some portion of his property and, and accessory buildings for the business. And I would really urge the board, if it was otherwise inclined to fight against Mr. Higgins tonight, to perhaps ask Mr. Solari or the board could do it to define with, with particularity what it is he needs to do to remedy this.
At this, at this, right at this juncture, before the board is just, right now, it's, it's whether we approve or, you know, upkeep the cease and desist. It's Mr. Higgins' responsibility, you know, to work with Mr. Solari to figure out what he has to do. It's not the board's, you know, we, we aren't the party that goes and says, okay, well, you got to do this, you got to do this, you got to do this. But I, I would say.
I understand. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just look now, is to get in compliance with the bylaw as it states, you'd be using one building and a portion of it, not four. And the, the trailers, they're part of the business. They're, 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 they're not incidental to the business. They are used solely for the business. Those would be required to be indoors as well. So then you're talking, you know, and I'm not going to say because I don't know, because then, you know, to fit all this stuff, you're, you're talking about a barn to keep it in a building and only use a portion of it. But right now, I'd like to, if I could, I want to see if the other members of the board have some, some questions or would like to make any observations as well. I mean, I, I don't want to, there's other members here. So I, I've told you what I believe and this is what I see, but I'd like to hear from some of the other board members as well. Jerry, Hannah?
Go ahead, Hannah.
Uh, you, you said that the three vehicles on the property are commercial vehicles. Is that correct?
Say that, say that again?
I'm sorry, the three vehicles on the property, they're all commercial vehicles?
Yes.
And in the picture, it was just a pickup truck, a, a large pickup truck with the landscape logo on the side. Are they all three similar?
No, there's, there's two other one-ton dump trucks.
Jerry, you have anything?
Yes. I guess I'll start with Counselor. The, what, what you presented isn't quite fully in sync with the engineer, Mr. Silver. And this is a letter Mr. Silver wrote June 4th. And it says, although all storage is not indoors, all storage is out of sight to the neighbors. That's not what the bylaw states, that it be out of sight to neighbors. He states that he's made suggestions to Mr. Higgins to better manage his storage and suggested the installation of a vinyl gate to hide the storage boxes. Again, that's not in keeping with the bylaw. And I say that because this was June 4th, and we are here at September 29th. And we're being asked by the business owner, tell me what to do. So in this period of time, from June 4th to September 29th, knowing you would be coming before this board looking to overturn the cease and desist, which is not something, by the way, Mr. Solari does just offhand. He takes that quite seriously, and I'm not quite certain that that's being taken into consideration, that the seriousness with which Mr. Solari does his job. And in fact, accusations made against Mr. Solari really turned me off, quite frankly. And additionally, you didn't bring any evidence of where it stands today. Some pictures, we have all pictures that the engineer submitted. But did you bring any pictures or any evidence that things are better than in the pictures that we have on file from, I assume, I assume the engineer took those pictures on June 4th. But I, I think the chairman has, has very clearly stated the, uh, what the bylaw is and whether or not this is in conformance. And Counselor, I, I, I think you're grasping at straws, quite frankly. And to come into this meeting unprepared to show steps have been taken, but then come into this meeting asking the board members what to do to be in compliance is, I guess, an admission of not being in compliance. And Counselor, you know very well that the board, board's mission this evening, our charge, is whether or not to uphold or overturn Mr. Solari's cease and desist. It has nothing to do with trying to handhold someone and, and bring them along. So between you and the engineer, I'm going to say that maybe you weren't properly prepared to represent your client. I'm not going to say you aren't, but I'm just going to say that I don't see, I certainly don't see enough here and the disrespect, and that additionally with the disrespect shown to Mr. Solari. I don't see anything here that
I'm not disrespecting.
Cause me, excuse me, don't interrupt, please. I don't see anything that would cause me to look to overturn Mr. Solari's cease and desist order. And additionally, you, you, Counselor, have also asked that maybe we would, or if we were going to overturn, maybe we would make a decision in a partial manner. But you're presenting nothing to, to show that anything has changed since June. And so, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes. First of all, I, I am not disrespecting the building inspector. I'm just telling the truth of what happened. And as far as changing anything, how can I change anything when no one has told me what to do? Oh, you know, because I went from having a meeting with a building inspector and Mr. Silver and saying, okay, we're going to turn around and tell you what you have to change, and then waiting for months because Steve Prisco's attorney.
Hello?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to just ask that the accusations stop and just stick to facts here.
I, I would agree. Look.
Counselor, I, I think you need to speak with your client.
Yes. Mr. Higgins, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm, I'm still on the line.
Well, let me, if, if, if I could ask you a question. It was my understanding, in terms of things being stored outdoors since the time of Mr. Silver's visit to the property, had you not undertaken some steps to remove things from outdoors?
Wait, no, I haven't done anything because I was waiting for him to get together with me to tell me what I needed to do to become compliant. But instead of that happening, he just sent me the cease and desist notice. So then I, I turned around and I, I, you know, went to the next step. But how am I supposed to know what is legal and what is not if, if someone's not here, you know, walking around saying, this is what you got to change?
I, I can, again, I, I can speak to that. And, and certainly, I, I want to make it clear to, to the extent it was suggested that, that there was any disrespect to Mr. Solari. Again, that was not at all my point of view. As, as, as I mentioned, I, I had spoken to him and I, I thought he was a perfect gentleman. But, and, and I, I think there is some disagreement as to what is required in a cease and desist order in terms of a particularity and in terms of designated a date you comply by it. I, I don't disagree in the least point that if something is, is not permitted, doing it out of sight, that doesn't make it any, any more permitted. I, I don't disagree with that proposition in the least bit. Again, I don't want to take time to just repeating myself. I don't read that provision of the use table to limit the accessory building to, to one, but I, I understand that it doesn't appear to be the board's interpretation.
I guess, but.
But I, I think this.
We could get down to just, let's look at this. The bylaw is basically there so that people don't run a commercial business in a residential area. Mr. Solari's cease and desist order basically stated that he finds that the business to be a commercial use can, of section 6.34. Looking at, and just looking at this again, the, the other, the bylaw is there. So truly incidental, you, you got a plumber and, you know, he, he's got his van and that's basically it. He keeps a little bit of stuff in a shed. He's, you know, a single guy. That's the exception. Here you're talking, and, and I understand, guys, it doesn't say anything about vehicles, but you've got four commercial vehicles, you know, two dump trucks in this, three trailers, four buildings. Guys, you're running a commercial business in a residential area. I don't know, I, I, I don't know how or what to tell you that you have, have to do not to do that. You'd have to get rid of the trailers, you know, a, a couple of the buildings. It says a portion. You're, 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 you're reading the bylaw well beyond what it was established to allow. It's, you are running a commercial business, guys. You know, everything's.
I, I understand, sir.
But that's not allowed in a residential area.
So what, if, if I was to, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. So if I was to move some of my operation.
Well, if I, I think, I think I'll interject, Mr. Higgins. I, I think the board's indicated that, that they're not going to be inclined to entertain a discussion like that tonight. So we'll, we'll have to get the decision of the board, and then you and I can have a discussion on, on what your next steps or what your next options are.
All right. I'd like to see if, Jen, if we have any, any people in the, this is a public hearing, correct?
This is a public hearing.
Does any people in the audience have any questions or say what they would like to make? But I would request that you keep it on point, otherwise, you know, again, this is, the purpose of this meeting is to understand whether, to understand is to either uphold or overturn Mr. Solari's cease and desist order. And that cease and desist order is premised on the zoning bylaw section 6.30, section 4.
We have.
You know, Higgins is a great guy, and I don't doubt that. You know, Higgins is a great guy, and I don't doubt that, that's, that's not really what we're looking at here. So please, if you're gonna make comments, keep it to the points and facts, please.
Paula Miller Esquire, I'll, I'll unmute you.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm attorney Paula Miller and I represent a client who'd like to speak in opposition. Is, is echo any better now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this appeal seems to begin with the cease and desist order that we've been speaking about. Um, however, to the discussions with Mr. Higgins about his landscaping business and the violations of uh, the bylaws have been kind of ongoing for years. So he has been on notice for quite some time um, that that running of landscaping business in a residential zone is uh, in violation of the bylaws and for the specific reasons. I believe these discussions um, existed long before the, the letter was actually sent to him. So he has been on notice for quite some time. The language of the bylaw is clear and it's clear that it's being violated for many of the reasons that have already been discussed um, today. It's a landscaping business being run out of a residential home and the bylaws restrict the home occupation that all, uh, anything that would be an external change to the appearance of the building and require that all the storage is kept indoors as we've been discussing. The commercial vehicles and trailers that have been discussed have been are an external change and uh, are not storage that's kept indoors, as well as the addition of these storage boxes, the storage sheds or storage containers are an external change related to running of the business, which would be in violation of um, that section as well. They have been added to the property for the purpose of running a off-premise occupation. And that's the issue really at the root of it, is all of these storage containers that are being added to the property so that things can be kept indoors are in self, themselves an external change that shows that he's running a commercial business in a residential zone. There's other sections of the bylaws that are being violated as well. Section four point one requires that all the buildings conform to the bylaws dimensional requirements and those storage sheds and containers don't meet the setback requirements. They have been there for quite some time. And there is an exception in the rules for sheds to be within five feet from the side and rear of the lot lanes, but that exception is only for non-commercial purposes, and it's been stated here tonight that those storage sheds and storage containers are specifically being used for the running of the business. The storage shed and the storage containers that are on their property are within twenty feet of each other as well, and they violate section eight point three, even if those buildings were lawfully placed on the lot. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, um, no one's complaining about this business. And it really, as the chairman stated, that really isn't the point of the discussion, is that it shouldn't be what people consider that to be a problem or not, it should be that everybody living and working in town should have reasonable expectation that the zoning bylaws as they're written would be enforced. It's that everyone is expected to follow the exact same set of written bylaws. And no one is asking that Mr. Higgins shut down his business. The cease and desist order that was given should be followed, not because they're try, trying to restrict him from running a business, just restrict how the business is being run in a residential zone. Um, if he had a commercial space, no one is saying that, that he wouldn't be completely in his rights to have all of these commercial vehicles stored there, uh, all the storage that he needs if it was done properly out of a commercial space, just not in a residential zone. Uh, therefore, we're asking that the board enforce the bylaws. Um, continue with the cease and desist order and respectfully request that the appeal be denied. Thank you.
Mr. Fred Chase.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I have submitted my comments in writing as was uh, referred to um, earlier in the evening uh, by the board. I, I just took note of the fact that Attorney Miller made reference to um, uh, her, her belief that the, the residents of the town should feel that uh, zoning is going to be enforced. And I do agree with that, but it does beg the question, why has the zoning not been enforced in this particular case over the course of, we're told, something in the order of twenty-four years? Uh, so I do find it particularly distressing that uh, a, an established business uh, that has existed uh, peacefully in the neighborhood for a period of twenty-four years uh, is now faced with a severe hardship. And I think that uh, the nature of this hardship is really going to be very substantial uh, upon Mr. Higgins and his business and his family. Um, I would like the board to simply consider the nature and the extent of that hardship and to, along with that, take into account uh, the fact that there is no serious detriment to the public good uh, ta- taking place by virtue of continuation of the business as it has been conducted thus far. That's all I have and I thank you.
Um, I see nobody else at this time with their hands raised. Ryan, you're unmuted if you were speaking.
Yes, I was, sorry about that. All right, at this time then, um, if there's no further comments or um, questions from the board, I would uh, just make a motion to end the comment section. Jerry?
Sorry, I, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, i- if there's no additional questions and comments, then I, I'd request that we um, close the public here, the section of the meeting.
Uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And regards to um, Mr. Higgins's request for the overturning of Mr. Solari's cease and desist order. If someone would like to make a motion, please.
I'll make a mo- motion, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, to uh, uphold Mr. Solari's uh, cease and desist order.
I would second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cease and desist order will be upheld. Thank you all for your, for your time. Thank you. Certainly. Uh, that being the last meeting of the night, um, make a motion to close the session, uh, Jen, unless we have any other items on the agenda, which I didn't see.
Um, I don't think so. I don't think there's any minutes for that minutes. No, yeah, no, we're good.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question. Is somebody still there to answer a question?
Yep.
Well, we have a, we have a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor at the moment.
Yep, let the board take the vote, then I can answer any question you have.
Say that again?
We have a motion to adjourn, so unless you want to-
Mr. Higgins, if you let the board take this vote and stay on the line, I'll answer.
I, I, I can't, you keep breaking up on me, I can't really hear you.
Could we, maybe we could ask for a second for the purposes of discussion, but a motion to adjourn closes everything, so.
Mr. Higgins, why don't we talk offline? They're, they're about to conclude the meeting.
Is that you, Dan?
Yes.
Uh, okay. I'll call you, thank you.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Um, so Jen is-
People are still running.
Jen, can we, can you confirm when the next meeting is?